Good evening and welcome to the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission, November 4th, 2021, meeting, regular meeting. I am Michael O'Reilly, Chairman of the Commission. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next hour we'll call the well, starting on my right.
Dominic Smiglino, alternate.
Ryan Condon, secretary.
Liam Brozick, Commissioner.
Michael Riley, Chairman. Bruno Mayini, Vice Chairman.
Robert Westling, Commissioner.
Rick Schultz, Town Planner.
Donna Suzinski, Office Manager.
Sarah Stroud, Recording Secretary.
Thank you. I'm going to read the announcements. This is a hybrid public meeting at council chambers and we are utilizing electronic equipment. This meeting may be accessed by the public either in person or electronically in real time as set forth below. This meeting will be conducted in part by electronic equipment pursuant to connect it state law, Public Act 112, to join through machine from your computer, tablet, or smartphone. Written public comments in compliance with the guidelines for public participation. Remote electronic meetings may be submitted up to the close of the business day, one day before the meeting, by electronic email. Thank you. We're going to move on to the first public hearing. This is ZCA 2021-02, number 1020D, 892 and 900 Main Street. This is continued from COVID-21 first meeting. Are there any new exhibits?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, new exhibits. Do we have, um... No, we have David Bjorklund for the applicant, I believe, Mr. Bjorklund.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Dave Bjorklund. I'm the professional engineer registered in the state of Connecticut, and I'm the president of SPAT Bjorklund Associates. This is a continuation of an application that was started back on October 21st, and the request is for a change of zone for 892 and 900 Main Street. These are two remnant parcels left over from, I believe, the original zoning map that was drawn up for the Town of Monroe, which set aside a depth of 200 feet for some properties running along Main Street and Route 111. And in this case, they set aside the first 200 feet to be zoned I-1 and the remaining acreage to be zoned I-2, making the properties difficult to develop in a conforming fashion. My client's request, who owns both parcels, one of the parcels is vacant, the other one, 900, he runs a business called Stewart Amusements, and he used this for the operation of his storage and maintenance of his amusement company's vehicles and amusement rides. What he'd like to do is be able to get more flexibility. The way to get more flexibility when you look at the zoning, and this was a concern of the Commission at the last meeting, was what uses are permitted in the DI-1 and in the DI-2. I put together a list reviewing it. I shared the list with Rick and...
The Commissioners have it, Mr. Chairman. Do any of the Commissioners have that list?
Okay, okay. Thank you, Rick. And if you review the list, there are 18 total permitted uses in the DI-2 zone, and there are only eight permitted uses in the DI-1 zone. Some of these overlap where the uses are permitted in both zones, but the, you know, if you want to have economic development and you want to give a property owner more flexibility, if you look at the list of, you know, the 18 permitted uses really gives a property owner a lot of flexibility. And there are a number of different uses on that north end of Route 25. The other thing that I shared with Rick is just a blow-up of the zoning map on the north end of Route 25. It really is kind of a mashup of different zones, but I think the thing that is predominates the zoning map is to the west of these properties, and remember the rear of these two properties are both zoned I-2, is all I-2 zone covering the entire Pepper Street Business Park and hundreds of other acres of property that runs north of Pepper Street. So, you know, the DI-2 is the predominant zone in the area. There is some DI-1 or I-1 across the street, but there is also I-3 across the street. There is a large piece of residentially zoned property across the street, and then there's some E-1 and B-2 zones thrown in at the north end of 25. And so what property owner that I'm representing, he would like to get one zone on his two parcels of property so that he can market these to a number of uses, as I said. One of the properties is vacant right now, and so he's got, he's got a lot of opportunities, but we need to get these properties, you know, into the I-2 zone. I'll be glad to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you, Mr. Bjorklund. Let's go to the Commissioners, starting on my right, Commissioner Smiglino, Smigliano.
No questions. No questions.
Hey, Dave. In the I-2 zone, we added certain things to the I-2 zone because we didn't want them on the main, the main road, and that's, we added other stuff like onto that I-2. And there's, and we had a big discussion on it because we looked at all the zones because we added stuff because we knew that those, that the I-2, it wasn't on the main, the main roads, like wasn't on one, it wasn't on 111, nor it wasn't on Route 25. So we added certain uses because to put into that zone.
I, I understand that, and you know, my...
Because we really, because when we really looked at it, we said that if we put it like in the I-2, we can give more uses in the I-2 because it was basically, um, done, the development that Jack Kimball did, and that most of it is I-2.
Right.
Because we added, we added uses to accommodate for, for an I-2 because we didn't have any I-2s directly on, on Main Street, nor did we have them on, on Route 111. When we started adding all these uses, I think you're gonna, you know, we were concerned about, you know, the school bus thing because the school bus parking, we put that in I-2. Autobody, all service, we put it in I-2. We added a bunch of stuff into, into that zone.
I unders, I understand that, and but...
And now you're getting, now you're, so if we open this up, you know, like you could put a shooting range there, you could put, um, you know, front half is, our school buses there.
With what, what we're left, what we're left with, with the existing zoning map is we have two small strips of land, only 200 feet, uh, that, you know, you've got two parcels of I-1 zoned land that don't, the area that's zoned doesn't conform to the current regulations, and I don't think there's much that you can do with an acre or less of land that is, has frontage on Route 25 and is zoned I-1. It really constricts my, my client from having some flexibility with the property. I mean, if you, I don't think you could do a shooting range in, you know, something that, I know you couldn't do a shooting range in something less than an acre, or you couldn't do school bus parking.
Yeah, but I, but, but on the other hand, that somebody can buy property next to it and they can expand it and stuff like that, that's, I mean, the reason why we added this stuff to an I-2 was because we knew that there wasn't any of it on 25, nor on Route 111.
Yeah, I, I, I under, you know, I understand that. I don't think that that's...
I mean, we, we went over this hard to add other uses to, to the I-2, and because people were concerned. And so we looked at, we looked at the zoning map when we did all this, and we added those because we knew that there wasn't any on the, on the main roads. I don't know, I mean, I don't think they want to remove things that we already put in the zone, but I mean, I thought your property was split anyway, a B and I, isn't it B and I?
It is. The, the, the frontage, very narrow 200 feet along the frontage is zoned DI-1.
The light is, dark is too.
And our, and the rear, and the rear is already I-2.
No, and, and I understand, but, but when we, we did all this, we, we wanted to keep it so that we can get some of these uses on the main road.
But if...
Because we looked at the maps.
If we wanted to leave the I-1 alone and just leave that strip and buy some property behind it, we would have those, those, those types of uses would have frontage on Route 25. This is, this is an unusual hardship, what, what the zoning map has done to these properties. I mean, I, I, I don't know what somebody was thinking 50 years ago when they decided a zone depth of 200 feet was a good idea. It just isn't, in my opinion.
We also passed something that you can come in front of us. You wanted to put a use in there that we could change the zone, that use.
We could do that, but that, again, that, that puts a burden, it's hard to attract a tenant when you tell them that, well, you're looking at a change of zone, and you're, and then you, you're looking at the whole permitting process. It doesn't, you know, the best piece of property is, is one that's ready to go.
And at that point, it sticks with the property, so we could approve that, and then all of a sudden they sell it to a bus company and voila. So, that doesn't really matter.
Well, no, I, no, because it would be just for the zone for that one, I mean, it's always a ripped down building, I mean, it just, you know.
You can just sell it, change, well...
Yeah, I'm saying, it's it...
Change of use in the zone, it's permitted at that point, then, right?
All right, well, that's all I have.
Commissioner Mayini.
Sorry. That was just, that was funny to me. I actually don't have any questions. I'm good.
No questions.
Well, I don't really like the idea of this zone being split like it is. I don't think that's right to split a property into two different zones, especially small properties like these. So I understand where you're coming from. But let's go to the public. Are there any members of the public here or online tonight that would like to comment or on this application before us? Once again, are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this application? Hearing none. Rick, do you have anything else to add to this?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, but the, the Plan of Conservation and Development does spell out for the Commission to reexamine the zoning map, essentially what you're doing tonight in part. Now, with Joe Chapman coming on board, he's effectively the planning and zoning administrator as of this Monday. We're going to be doing several tasks, including recodifying the zoning regs, reexamining the zoning map, and coming up with recommendations. It's always beneficial for districts to follow the property lines. That's planning and zoning 101, no question about it. It's up to this board to determine which zone you want it in, should be an either-or. Obviously, the I-2 provides more flexibility, and that's why you have the petition tonight. This plan wants, uh, more flexibility in providing uses. But clearly, it should be, the whole property should be in one, one zone.
I agree.
Okay, then, back to you, Mr. Bjorklund.
No, that, that concludes my presentation and my comments. I thank the Commission for your time.
All right, then we're planning on closing the hearing. What shall we say? Looking towards approving this draw by approval?
What's the, what's the shooting range down on 25? Is that an I-zone on 25, or is that in a different zone?
It's a B-1, I believe.
It's a B-1 in the last unit? But it's, I mean, it's on 25, yeah.
It is a potpourri of zones up there.
It is, even got one, little patch of one half or two.
Yeah. You got little pockets of mixed zones that need to be reexamined. And that's exactly what we're going to be doing.
Talking about it in subcommittee anyway, about one and two.
Right. You're going to be, you know, with the, um...
So what's the concern that we're going to have there?
Affordable housing plan, you should look at.
Streets is the bus parking, right? Everything else is on Main Street. Might not be in the eyes of...
All right, well, we're going to close the hearing. You ready? You have any other questions?
Ryan? Uh, no, we can close it.
All right, then the hearing is closed. Brian says close it. Number two public hearing, SCP-2021-12, file number 1637A, 1585 Monroe Turnpike. Mr. Condon, you have the notice.
All right, SCP-2021-12, file number 1637A, 1585 Monroe Turnpike. SB2, Special Exception Permit Application for Repurpose and Construction of Self-Storage Buildings Located at 1585 Monroe Turnpike. Cessor Map 150, Lot 1, Stevenson Properties LLC, Owner J. Edwards and Associates LLC Representative. Notice was published. Voices? Twice.
Two times. That's it?
That's it.
Rick, you have exhibits.
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Exhibit number one is the Town Engineers' Comments, dated 10/19/21. Exhibit number two, Town Engineer Bon Estimate. Exhibit number three, ARV Recommendations. Number four, Response to the Engineering Comments, the applicant. Number five, Submission of Revised Site Plans. And number six, Conservation and Water Resources Commission's Recommendations. That's all.
Thank you, Rick. And for the applicant?
Hi.
Say your name and address.
I am Jack Kimball, for record, and I live at 262 Westport Road, Easton, Connecticut. Okay, I'm just trying to get some files up on the screen. Yeah, Jack, let me help you see. Okay, good. How do we get it up on the projector? Oh, we have to do it, we have to share a screen. Yeah, okay. Okay, all right. So, I'm here representing Kimball Family Investments, which is the owner of Stevenson Properties LLC, and we are proposing a self-storage facility in the new Stevenson Flex Park, where the old lumberyard was. And to start out, I just want to give the Commission a context of the property. So up here we have the site, and can you see my mouse? Okay, okay. So here's Route 111, and over here we've got Route 34. And this building right here is the proposed self-storage facility. It's currently approximately 25,000 square feet on four and a half acres. And you can see some of the elevations we have listed here. So the Route 111 is at 260 feet up here, right as you're kind of entering the Stevenson area. And then out in front of the building, it's approximately 220 feet. And the buildings here are at about 200 feet in elevation. But the buildings go up about 30 feet. So really, you're not going to have much of a sightline to the back of the property, and you're not going to see much of this building either because it'll be blocked by the neighboring buildings or the railroad on the other side. So, and then we have, uh...
You said we're not going to see that building?
Uh, you're not going to see the upper portion of the lot. You'll see the front of the building, but you won't see much of the sides.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, that, that's what I meant.
Yeah, because when I drive by, I can see the building.
Yeah, you can see, you can see the front of the building. I'll, I'll show you the, uh, front of the building next.
Just want to be clear.
Yeah, yeah, we've, we've got, um, we did a rendering to kind of walk you guys through the property as well. So here we've got the existing building that you see from the road. Yeah, not, not the best condition currently, but we're really excited to finally be able to get in and renovate this into something that we're really proud to show off. And here we have the, uh, rendering. Okay. So that's the new front of the building, and then as we go on the side, there will be a gate to access the remainder of the facility. Sorry, it's a little shaky, but the siding of the building will be in a Nantucket gray, and all of the doors will be garage doors as opposed to the typical roll-up doors that you see with self-storage. In the back, we've got a loading dock, and that's where the dumpsters and mechanicals are going to be as well. So they're hidden from view, and then you can also drive along this side. This is where the, this is the side that the railroad tracks are on. And there's another gate to make sure that the facility feels very safe. Also, these are not going to be the gates ultimately. These won't be the gates ultimately. They'll be a nicer, more upscale look. It'll be the aluminum kind with the wrought iron fence look, and they'll roll as opposed to swinging up. But really, what we wanted to emphasize with this was, we want to create a nice, modern look and have it be a safe facility and really create a nice gateway into the town that's cohesive with the rest of the property. That's why we went with the gray. The other facilities neighboring this property are going in the blue-gray color scheme as well, so it'll all blend together. We would also like to, uh, do solar on this property, and so we are going to have the main building here. This is the existing building. We're going to take off part of the front of the building, but we'll show you that in the architectural plans. And then we're also going to have these buildings in the back. These will be the standalone, single-level self-storage buildings, but they are only going to be visible from a small portion of the road, and you won't see any doors on them because they'll be facing into the other buildings. But we, since everything is south-facing, we thought that having solar would be an added bonus to the property. Now, here you can see the architectural plan for the front building, and this is, uh, you can see the front 40 feet of the existing building are going to be torn down to accommodate for some of the larger trucks that need to enter the facility and to make sure that they have enough of a turning radius to navigate without hitting anything. And then they're going to be, uh, the entire front building will be climate-controlled, dry-up access. And they're going to be pretty large units themselves, so it'll fill a need that's not currently being met by any property, you know, radius. Larger and... This will be a two-floor facility in the back half, utilizing the existing shell, and... Yeah, so it'll have an elevator towards the facility, and there will be mechanicals in the outside in the back to accommodate for the elevator, to have a backup generator source so that, uh, it's safe, and there will be two stairwells as well in the back portion of the building. Here we have the elevations. Sorry, I... Not be able to scroll. Yeah. Okay, um, I'm having an error with this page. We'll move on to the upper storage buildings. This isn't a rendering. This is just kind of a sample of what they're going to look like. Again, you won't be able to see the doors from any portion on the road because of the way that we've situated it, as we'll show in the site plan. But again, we're just going with a nice Nantucket gray and white color scheme to kind of avoid some of the garish colors that you typically associate with self-storage. And... We will look at that in the site plan here. Okay, so here we have... Can't see that. All right, so this area with the lines across it is the property that we're proposing self-storage for. In the front, you can, or on the right side, you can see the existing building. And the middle section is where the single-story facility will go, and here's the road again for reference. This is the existing structure. This shows the existing structure. This shows where the buildings in the back will go. And that's approximately 16,000 square feet. And the front building will have approximately a little over 30,000 square feet of storage, I think 32,000 square feet. And here you can see the entrance. We have, uh, we've gotten state approval for this entrance already. And then here you can see the landscaping. Some plantings in the front. Currently, they're, uh, currently they're on kind of the corner in the boundaries of the property. And you'd like to speak with him regarding the needs of the facility. And we're going to be doing some bushings in the front and the corner. And they're anchored by a no tree. And then the sort of metrics plan that the property will be. But it'll also be dark sky compliant, and we use. And they're going to have sensors as well to make sure that people feel safe when they're on the property, but it doesn't interfere with any of the property. Okay, so do you have any questions?
Well, thank you for the question. We could start with any questions on my right.
So a total of five buildings?
Um, they're, so in the upper portion, they're going to be.
And is anything going in the rest of the property?
No, not currently. This is, um, the property is pretty rocky and, uh, that's also where we're putting it right now on kind of the front and middle part of the property.
Your company owns the entire?
Entire property. We own the four and a half acres of the store. Yeah, additionally, those two areas that I mentioned, the middle and the front section, are paved currently. And we'll be reducing the pavement, the impervious of just about 2.5%. And also adding some water treatment to improve the facility's water runoff in that way as well.
Thank you. Are there internal units or are they all external?
There are internal units. I will pull up the architectural plan.
Those up on the, on the second floor of the building?
Yeah, the second floor of the.
Where's your parking? I only see two spots on the plan.
Yeah, so the parking will be on the edges of the building, but it'll be very short-term parking just for your unit. We'll have a couple parking spaces in the front that would be for doing administrative stuff like renting a unit or leaving the facility. And then, but mo-most of it will be just parking in your unit. That's, that's the whole point of having the.
What if you have the internal unit, though?
If you have the internal unit.
You're just going to park in front of someone else's unit?
Uh, you can park near the loading dock as well. In the, in the.
At in the rear lane.
Have those spaces marked out?
It says loading area.
It's just marked out as a loading area. That may be one of the markers others. Parking.
Okay.
Team in a parking.
And then the external units, are they large enough to store vehicles?
Yes, but there won't be power access in the unit. There will be nothing, kind of like, to prevent people from kind of using it as a shop. Storage facility and not a place where people can park.
And the sole is, it's not going to be completely run by solar, correct?
Um, we're trying to calculate the load usages. But we should, aside from not sure whether electric heat or something, but we should be able to run the utility of the lot.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to go. I'm all set.
Yeah, I'm set. You can have restrictions on what you can store in the building?
Yes, we will.
Get a list of that?
I don't think we currently have a list. It'll, it'll meet the zoning requirements for what you can store. Yeah, no, no flammable liquids. We can, we can get you a list. There's a, there's an industry standard, and it's also listed in the zoning requirements for self-storage.
And you're planting screening in the back. Isn't there somebody at this behind them?
So.
There's a Mondo. Mondo's in there, so somebody behind Max right there, or Wiley or whatever.
Site this morning, and most of it is screened by the railroad track already. There's a steep drop-off on the other side of the railroad track. There, there's some light screening and fencing in place on. You feel that most of it is covered in the railroad track already. If you look here, uh, down here, it drops to 135 feet on the other side of the railroad tracks, and we're at 215 feet. And the railroad track is slightly above the upper portion of the lot back there. So then it drops off pretty steeply.
So what's the railroad track at?
The railroad track is at or above the 215 feet, but increases slightly around this corner.
At 215 feet, the railroad track?
Yes.
And your property in the corner is at 217 feet?
Um, yeah.
Right, so you really don't have any screen, really, or mean?
No, I mean, there, currently, there's some small red seat spaces in the corner of the property, but there's not significant screening.
You don't plan on putting any screening back there?
That's not currently the plan. Uh, we, we want to make sure that the whole property is fenced.
Yeah.
Obviously, but we weren't planning on putting additional screening.
And what kind of fencing are you going to?
Currently, there's.
I mean, probably, I know you're going to use gates up front, but what are you going to use?
Yeah, there's, there's an existing metal fence going around the property, the chain-link
And did you, was this in front of Architectural Review Board and all that stuff already?
Yes, uh, we've, we've been through Architectural Review Board, and they approved it, or passed it along to.
Do we have an approval? I don't see that.
I don't see any of that.
That should have been in your package. They, they recommended approval with no changes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry we couldn't load up the elevations for this. File was corrupted, but.
The guy that's behind you there, what's, 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 what's his property at over there? Wiley?
You mean, it's on the other side of the tracks? It's a back of Mondo.
Yeah, what's he that?
What was the question?
Elevation of his property.
Yeah, I, I don't have that. I'm going to recommend that we continue the hearing because there's a list of things that staff has to get for the commission.
No, I was just wondering, I just don't.
And I want to make sure, I don't know if your memory stick is what's doing it or, or if it's the.
Yeah.
Top.
Yeah, I'm not sure. We had it working before, but, you know, things, files get corrupted and it happens.
No, I just, I'm just concerned about that person that's behind you.
Is there an elevation up there on that?
So the elevation up here, um, this is, uh, the, the left, I'm sorry, you can't.
House is back there.
Yeah, that's the house behind the chair.
Yeah, so the house is here. And the elevation at the start of the property is 135 feet. And then we don't have the elevation in between, but the property, our property is at 215 feet. So it's a, it's a very steep. It's a, we're, we're much higher.
Higher than them?
Yeah, we would need.
He said 135.
Yeah, we'd need like 60-foot trees to be able to, uh, for them to be able to see the trees.
Okay. That's what I was concerned about. And I'm concerned about what you're going to store, and so I need a list of that.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
My unit.
You guys don't plan on putting any long-term storage outside, right? Like shops or something? Because there's some self-storage facilities in town that do allow you to park a, a box truck or?
Yeah, we're, we're planning on just having the internal storage.
So no vehicles will be overnight inside the?
No, so down the street is Jensen's, and they do a U-Haul rental kind of thing. So we have no interest in competing in anything like that. We want this to be a storage, an internal storage facility.
I'm pretty good, Scott. I'm all set.
Will the clientele have 24-hour access to this?
Yes, they will have 24-hour access. We're going to have it banned during like normal office hours. And, uh, but we want people to be able to access their units at all times. As far as the lighting goes for that, we want to have lighting on until maybe 8 o'clock. Kind of try to anticipate when people are going to be using it. And then after that, it'll just be motion-activated to make sure that it's still well-lit and safe, but it doesn't interfere with any surrounding problems.
Are we going to have a keypad to open the gates or?
Yes, they will have their own access codes for the gates. And, yeah, they, they'll have access to both gates.
Are you guys running this facility or is somebody else coming in to?
We're, we're going to be running it.
You're building it, you're running it, you're staffing it?
Yeah, the, the goal is for this to be kind of the start to a new storage business for my family. And we want this to be kind of the first showcase property that we can point at and say, uh, when we're trying to propose future facilities in other towns, we can look at it and say, this is how beautiful we can make a self-storage facility. We're not trying to hack together something like some of the other facilities with the bright doors and gimmicky windows. We want it to be just a beautiful piece for the town.
The, um, the fence around there, the chain-link, is that privacy? It's just.
It's just a chain-link fence.
There's no.
Yeah, I mean, um, the, on a lot of it, it's boarded by the railroad.
Right.
Currently, so it's, uh, yeah, there, there's not really a whole lot of traffic.
Just, just curious, I mean, if it's going to be as nice of a building as you're saying, then, you know, we don't need to hide it, per se, you know?
Yeah, I mean, the, the goal is to have the front be kind of a showcase piece, and then the sides are going to be more toned down and just functional.
Can you talk more about the renovation of the building? You know, what, what type of disrepair? I mean, what, what condition is it in now? And how extreme does the renovation need to be?
It's, it's in pretty bad shape now. We're going to be able to use the shell, we're going to be able to use the roof structure, but most of the internals are going to have to be fixed. It, it's still helpful to have the existing shell, and we're going to kind of, uh, we're going to fix one of the roof lines as well to make it a little bit more appealing from the outside. But most of it has to be redone. The, the floors right now are asphalt, and we're going to make them concrete floors. So, yeah, it's pretty extensive.
Got it. Okay, that's, that's all I have.
I kind of have a weird question.
Yeah.
They're all weird. So you're going to have a, just that area? What about like animals coming through there? Like, how high is that fence, that chain-link fence? Because it's pretty wooded there. I mean, I know it's kind of like, I don't know, just something to think about, like, if you're going to have people with self-storage and their cars in there, and then all of a sudden, you know, Bambi and his, Bambi and his crew are over there hanging out.
Yeah, I, I think, um.
Some of them animals can jump, man. Some can dig. I'm just, I don't know, it's just heavily wooded over there.
You afraid of deer?
Am I afraid of deer? I eat them.
Yeah, no, it's a valid.
Pet bobcats, I mean, I, I'm, I'm good. Rock and loons, we're all friends.
So, the other thing is, you have the design of all these buildings?
Yes, uh, we, we have the design, um, I'm sorry.
Theme and everything, we don't have any of that?
The, uh, the elevations didn't blow, unfortunately.
They're going to come. They're staying open anyway.
Yeah, we need to continue this.
So can you just go to, it's two stories in the back?
It's two stories in the back, uh, and that fits with.
But there'll be an external entrance to the second floor?
No, that, that'll be internal. Uh, we've got two stairwells to access the second.
In the elevator.
The doors are what? They're, you said they're not conventional up garage?
Internal doors are going to be the roll-up doors with self-storage, but the external doors for the larger existing building, those will be the three-panel insulated garage doors so that we can have back, uh, outside access, climate-controlled.
So they'll be roll-up doors?
Uh, those, those will be like your standard garage doors.
Right, and you pull up?
Yep, you, you pull up. We didn't want to do any kind of electrical ones in case power went out.
Manual?
Yeah, they'll be manual.
Okay. And the same with the four buildings in the back?
Those, those will be, um, those won't be climate-controlled, so they'll be the standard roll-up doors.
Okay. How about the cars out? The parking is just for people dropping things off and picking them up? No one's going to leave their vehicle there?
Correct.
Okay. All right, great, that's all my questions. Let's go to the public. At this point, are there any members of the public here tonight that have any questions or comments on the application before us? Are there any members of the public online tonight that have any comments for the application up before us? Here, none of the staff have anything?
No.
We will keep it open.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm recommending that we, we take this to the December meeting. Our next meeting's going to be pretty full. We'll continue this to the December meeting.
All right. Then do you have any last comments?
Um, no, I think...
Well, we continue.
I just wanna say thank you for...
Hopefully we'll see the nice picture. All right, so we have, uh, one 2021-10, file number 1638A571587, Pepper Street. Ryan, you have the notices?
Yes, uh, I found the first part this time. In accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, November 4th, 2021 at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter. Be a hybrid go-to meeting, uh, with access by phone and limited in-person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall, Chamber 7, Van Hill Road. Uh, SCP 2021, file number 1638A571587, Pepper Street, I-2. Special exception permit application for potential development of an office and warehouse moving at 571-587 Pepper Street. Suspect map 103, lot 029/030. Maybrook Properties LLC, owner, solely engineering representative. Please check the town and Monroe website for announcements of meeting cancellations, rescheduling. Uh, legal notice, uh, was posted in voices twice.
Thank you. And, uh, Rick, exhibit?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, exhibit number one, Health Department comments. Number two, engineering comments, and exhibit number three, green cards for the certified mail receipt. That's all.
Thank you. And for the applicant?
Sure.
We have?
We have, um, a hybrid presentation tonight, so I'm here to introduce, um, good evening, everyone. My name is Luke Morrow. I'm a professional engineer and a professional traffic operations engineer. I was solely engineering. This is at 501 Monroe Turnpike, uh, in Monroe. I'm here tonight with Mary Blackburn, um, who's our landscape architect. She's gonna be running you through the technical part of our presentation. Um, we're here tonight, uh, representing the owner who's, uh, Maybrook Properties for a special exemption permit, uh, for proposed office and warehouse development at 571-587 Pepper Street. Uh, property is about, uh, just under five acres, 4.8 acres, and it's located in the industrial two district.
Mary? On my screen?
How do we get her screen?
Yeah, uh, Donna will, okay, make her the presenter.
With that, I will hand it off to Mary once we get...
Yeah, they came, I think they were met, came in last. Yeah. A minute.
I wanna see that.
Yep.
Okay, thanks. So as we said, I'm Mary Blackburn, a registered landscape architect in the state of Connecticut, uh, with solely engineering. Um, so, yeah, and an idea of the site here, Monroe, um, and Main Street here. We've been a little, let's see, Route 25, Main Street, and the intersection with Pepper Street. And these two properties, 587 and 571, are right on the corner, uh, Pepper here. So, um, 587 is mostly wooded and, um, wetlands and, um, 571 has an existing residential, um, building and the remnants of an old foundation, uh, behind it. Some additional aerial views. Uh, this is kind of looking from Main Street over towards Pepper. And then you can see better kind of the, the women of the wetlands here, the existing building and driveway, our house and driveway and the old foundation. Uh, so the owner, Maybrook Properties, uh, we'd be familiar with him. He, um, Dwayne owns, uh, 500 Pepper Street and we recently come, tweeted this and they actually moved in and are operating. And that, you can see, this is right here, um, 500 Pepper. So they are actually, they're doing so well that they need additional space. And he purchased these two properties and wants to develop them, um, to have additional office and storage space. So the proposal is, um, for a barn-type style building in front. That would be, uh, two stories with office and that is 9,000, 9,800 square feet, uh, first story and then a loft on the second story. And then behind that, kind of screened by a nice, um, barn building would be, um, 22,000 square foot warehouse with, um, roll-up garage doors, five on this side and then a loading dock on this side. Uh, access would be, uh, an entry-only drive here and then a two-way, um, drive on this side. The grading and drainage, we have, um, a water quality basin in the back in combination with, uh, storm, uh, underground detention system, um, and a level spreader here. And then a portion is captured and goes through a hydrodynamic separator, um, along the front here. We have water service from the street. Also gas. On the ground, electric. And then the proposed landscaping is all natives. Uh, we went, we are in the wetlands approval already, um, and we're making a few, uh, revisions for their comments, but, um, most of the landscaping is along the wetland buffer here. Um, they were proposing a sign out front, um, but they no longer have any proposed monument sign. And then the lighting would just be two, um, pole lights. Um, we're at point two, put candles at the property line and zero, put candles at the wetlands. And then a few wall, uh, wall pack fixtures, uh, along the building to light most of the parking. Here we have the floor plans. So you see the five, um, warehouse storage areas. And then this would be the ground floor of the office space. Loft area of the office space and then the elevation. And then something better than that elevation. We actually have some rendering. Uh, so this would be the front of the building, the view from Pepper Street, where you would see this barn-style office building and it would screen most of the warehouse behind it. Uh, so here you can see the, a few of the doors and the office building in front. And another view there. So as I previously mentioned, we did get, um, in the wetlands approval, we received comments from Dotville Town Engineer and we're working, um, to address those with him. Um, so at this time, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I don't think we've received a copy of the plans.
Plans?
I'm gonna assume that...
We have no plans.
Staff had them and that's not on these guys. We've never received any of this information.
We don't have any of this.
No, that's, that's what I just told you.
None of it.
Deliveries were made last Friday.
Not of that, though. We received, uh, a stack of stuff on the, uh, the other.
We don't have any of them.
I just, I, I can, we definitely...
Yeah, we received the quarry, uh, the quarry information that came in the mail.
We don't have anything else.
A big packet of all that.
We'll have to, we're gonna keep the hearing open.
Yes.
Yeah, this needs to go to ARB.
Yeah, so we did submit to ARB, um, earlier this week and, um, we'll be looking, um, to present to them next week. Um, but we did submit all the, the drawings and application material.
They have a wetlands approval already?
Yes, yes, yep.
They just received that.
What, they voted on it already?
Yes, uh, last week, last week, right, Mary?
Last Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, I assume you guys did drop something off and there was an issue on our end, um...
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
We're, we're getting there. They're hand-delivered now, though.
Uh, yeah, it just, they weren't.
Mary, you submitted to ARB, but you also submitted a, a separate application?
Yeah, we submitted to planning and zoning, um, don't have the D.
Okay, all right.
We submitted the...
I will figure that out.
Oh, they, they should have been in the package.
We have any, well, let's see if we have any questions from the commissioners at this point.
Yes, cause we did get Scott's, um, we got, well, wetlands and we got, uh, planning and zoning review comments, so they were definitely...
All right, so let's start right with Commissioner Smiraglino.
No questions.
Uh, I'm sorry, we were a little noisy over here, uh, when you started off, cause we were all trying to figure out if we got these plans. What's the, uh, company that's looking to move over and do this?
So it's Caruba, so they're currently located at 500 Pepper. And we, um, about five years ago, started that process and they've just moved in and, you know, already busting at the seams, so they needed some extra room for office and storage.
All right, um, is there any plans, uh, for some type of cross, is, is there a crosswalk? Is, is there gonna be movement between the buildings, like a campus that we need to worry about or?
No, they'll operate, um, separately. They're, you know, it's quite a ways down Pepper Street. This is the site and this is, um, yeah, that's, that's why they have the additional office building in conjunction with the warehouse here.
We, we should mention that there are 62 on-site parking spaces, which is per zoning code for the warehouse at Office U, so there's...
Oh, yeah, plenty of parking, okay, perfect. Um, yeah, that's it for me for now. I do wanna get the plans, though, and revisit.
Where do they plan storing in there?
Say again?
Where do they plan on storing?
Uh, so Mary, I, I may kick that to you, but I believe they're still trying to, they're, I believe they're gonna be using it partially for their own equipment and they may look to, to rent out or?
Yeah, um, so for now, it would be used for their own equipment and, um, just for containers and boxes and, um, storage of the materials that they currently use at 500 Pepper Street, um, just some additional spaces.
No chemicals, or not like that? No chemical storage?
Nope. No, all natural products.
That's what I have for now, until we get the plans and then we'll go from there.
Commissioner Maini?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good until we get the plans.
What is the projected, um, uh, staffing requirements gonna be for the facility?
I don't know if we have... So I don't, I don't know if we have an exact count, but I, I would, I would assume it's a handful of staff, you know, like, more for their operations. I mean, now, that 9,000 square foot office, I don't think they'd more than have more than 10, 15 employees.
Any idea on the delivery, uh, frequencies?
So, so we're designing for, so you could see, uh, that half area on the right and then what's kind of, uh, screened in gray there. So that's, uh, intersection site distance for a passenger car. Most, most, most vehicles in and out of the day, we're, we're assuming gonna be passenger cars along with some box trucks in the back. We are anticipating perhaps a trailer maybe once a week, maybe once every couple of weeks, but not, you know, on a standard basis. So mostly passenger cars with some box trucks.
You have a loading dock there, right?
There is a loading dock, yes.
You're gonna have some sort of big truck.
They're, they're, they're allowing for a larger truck and, and a truck can get on-site, maneuver in that kind of, uh, triangular area on the bottom right corner and get into the loading dock and then get back out to Pepper Street. So it can accommodate a full-size tractor-trailer, but we don't anticipate them.
Thank you.
Yeah, it would be very, very frequent. Most of the tractor-trails would go to the larger facility at 500 Pepper.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Blackburn. Um, at this point, we'll go to the public. All right, are there any members of the public here or online tonight that have any comments or questions on the, um, SCP 2021-13 before us now? Any members of the public here or online that have any questions or comments? Uh, hearing none, um, we'll go back, uh, to you, Mr. Morrow.
Okay, um, I appreciate everyone's time tonight, apologize. Um, you didn't include plans, but we will come prepared next time to answer any questions you have after your more detailed review. Uh, Dot Point, we should have PRB, you know, to close everything out next week.
All right, then we continue this until, um...
Yeah, uh...
You do December?
December 4th.
December 4th.
Yeah, Mary and Luke, uh, we have a big hearing on the 18th.
Okay.
All right, thank you, then.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a couple of more things here. We have pending minute meeting, we have pending meeting minutes. You were not, you were absent. October 21st, 2021, town planning and zoning minutes. We needed a, uh...
Commissioner Maini was not here.
Who's gonna vote?
I'll make a motion.
Well, hold on, you gotta seat somebody, I think.
No, that's, we got enough.
We have enough.
We have enough.
I should have those.
You do, it's right there in your left hand. Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Have a motion in a second?
The meetings.
To approve the meeting minutes as...
A second, Condon?
Motion in a second. Now, we have any discussion of the minutes? Even look good? Any changes?
None.
If not, then I'll call the roll starting on my right. Condon, yes.
Ambrose, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Westland, yes.
Our past. Any applications, determinations, and deliberations? So we have one that, um, we have a draft approval before us. No, man, this was sitting. Yeah, it was sitting here. There it is. Sound boundary change, EBA 2021-01, file 101918.
Ooh, yes.
Do that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Commission directed staff to write a favorable on the proposed zone change, RF2 to age-restricted residents. Planning and zoning commission is considering the petition. 1271 Monroe Turnpike LLC for the rezoning of property identified as 1271 Monroe Turnpike, consisting of approximately 14.9 acres from RF2 to ARR. Whereas the applicant received approval from the inland wetlands commission on the proposed regulated activities associated with proposed ARR development. Uh, I, I wanna preface too, because, uh, uh, this petition also included, uh, land use-related, uh, drawings. This is only the zone change. And I, and not the site development. Whereas a copy of the proposed zone, zone boundary change was duly filed with the Monroe Town Clerk. Whereas a notice of the below-noted public hearing was published twice in voices. Whereas pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 817 and 9.2.4, the Monroe zoning regs, commission has considered the proposed zone boundary change at a duly-nosed public hearing opened on September 16th, 2021, and closed on October 21st, 2021, at which time interested persons were afforded an opportunity to be heard. Whereas written notice of the public hearing was sent to a budding propurners within 500 feet of the subject property as evidenced by certified mail receipts submitted. Whereas the application was referred to the Conservation and Water Resources Commission who recommended native plants for ARR development. Shall therefore be resolved, uh, consistent with Connecticut General Statute 8-3 and the Monroe zoning regulation. Uh, a motion is, uh, needed in a second to approve the zone boundary changed as proposed and presented, uh, with the following. Be it further resolved, the commission relies on the following reasons. Improving the zoning action set forth herein. The zoning actions will, will not change or diminish any partial street frontage, lot access, or other existing block condition. The zoning action will not adversely impact neighboring properties. The zoning action is consistent with the plan of conservation and development, promoting a wider selection of housing choice that supports the retention of residents in Monroe through the various stages of life and attracts new residents to the community. The change in zoning is a positive change to the benefit of the property and surrounding neighborhood. And be it further resolved, the commission... And be it further resolved, the commission authorizes the publishing notice of decision consistent with the requirement set forth in eight dash three D. And be it further resolved, the approval some become effective on Friday, November twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, subject to the filing of the zone boundary change map endorsed by the commission chair along with the endorsed copy of this approved resolution and recording the Monroe land records. And be it further resolved, the final zoning boundary change map should not be authorized to be recorded in the Monroe land records until and has been endorsed thereon by the commission chair. And be it further resolved, the following, so it'll be completed, and that's the standard, uh, sections. Mr. Chairman, uh, you're ready to make a motion, a second?
I will entertain a motion to, um, approve ZCA twenty twenty-one dash oh one.
I'll make a motion to approve ZCA dash two zero two one dash zero one, file number one zero one nine D.
Have a motion, need a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
No, sir.
No discussion, then I'll call the roll, starting on my right.
Oh, no, I, no.
Discussion?
I have a little discussion, yes.
Alright, let's have some discussion.
Okay, I think property's probably.
Pump your brakes.
Yes.
Already having issues with the age restricted up there already in the other property, right, with the septic and stuff up there?
Uh, some minor issues that are, uh.
Minor or?
Addressed.
What, up there?
When I say minor, they can be addressed, it just costs money.
Oh, but there is issues up there. Yeah, I have it, I just have an issue. I think that it's, it's a tough piece of property to be putting this age restricted on there, because it's, it's a lot of wetlands on that piece of property.
What are the nature of the issues?
I have problems with the septic system.
Right.
Yeah, the earlier designs, Rob, you know the designs, they're earlier designs.
Are they in failure?
And they have to make, uh, they have to clean, uh, expand, and, uh.
So they're in failure, full failure?
Not, not full failure, but they have to be addressed.
Well, there's several, um, leaching fields up there. It's, each block has a set, their own leaching field. So I don't know how many of them are failing or what the nature of the failure is.
There are so many variables, as we all know.
Yeah.
Because all of us have a septic system, including myself. Uh, water tables change, but clearly it's the installation and we have very good inspections that are done now.
Well, no, I understand all that.
Well, nothing's, we don't know. We don't know if it's been perked or anything, they don't have any plans, this is just.
Nothing's being built with the zone change.
No, but they did.
That's what I'm saying.
Did address at the hearing, but, uh, at the hearing, Chairman, that initial perk test were done.
Oh, they did?
They are confident. There are areas where they can do the reserve and the primary.
They're gonna bring in what they want to put.
They have to write.
There's no set plans.
No, no set plans.
Doing is changing the zone.
But Leon, you bring, you bring up, uh, good points.
But it's not tough, this is a tough piece of property.
You know, you know those properties.
I know, I know the property, that I, well, I look at the wetlands on it.
Yeah.
And you have to go along between the wetlands in order to get.
That's what his, his original, his original little.
Piece of property.
Yeah, was it currently zoned as again?
Uh, RF two.
RF two, so we're making it more restrictive to build on this property by changing it to a age restricted.
Or, or change it to age restricted, I'm saying.
And I don't know about.
No, no, we're allowing more.
No, you're allowing.
Adding more units.
A little bit easier.
You're adding more units on a piece of property.
The intensity is.
Gotcha.
But they have stated in, you know, the applicant is, uh, our engineers, and they did their initial testing and they are fully confident.
Of course they're.
I mean, I, I could, you know, I, I would, I would be all for it if there wasn't that much wetlands on the property. I, I, it's, it's like, you're putting something in there that you're trying to turn all in there to get, to accommodate.
The road is a serpentine road, you're absolutely.
No, you're absolutely right, because they don't wanna go through the wetlands, because they have to go through the wetlands and they have to pipe it and they have to do all sorts of things, and that's why it's like that, and I understand, it's a tough piece of property to put age restricted on it, that, that's my opinion on it, because it's a really tough piece of property.
Are you worried about the people that live there once it's built?
I worry about the septic failing or any kind of thing like that, and don't forget, you have wetlands and it seeps into the wetlands and then you have problems into the wetlands. That, I have a problem with that part of it. This is a tremendous amount of wetlands.
The state will review this. I don't know if the other one was. This goes to the state.
Well, I don't know about all that. All depends on how, how many units he has if it goes to the state, no?
I talked to the sanitarian, he's, he's gonna forward this to the state.
Yeah, but is that a requirement of this town?
Can do it.
He can do it. Okay, well, I just have issues. If, if it wasn't, if, if it wasn't the way it was set up, in the way that you're trying to get it in there and.
I know, but Lee, Lee, we're not even worried about that at the, at this moment, we're.
That might not, yeah, they might be changing.
But Leon knows the property.
No, but I'm saying, but once you change.
What I'm saying is I underst, but once you change the zone, you could change it again later. You have to. They're changing it now, that doesn't mean they can't change it again later. All you're doing is just giving them the ability to, to.
Take it to the next.
For us now, is all you're doing. And if it doesn't pan out, if it does not pan out, the next person or the same person can come back for another zone change.
The commission can initiate it.
I mean, there's.
Initiate what?
Zone change.
No, we're changing the zone.
No, I don't know what you're saying, you.
I understand that once you change the zone, and it comes in with permit for age restricted, we have to find a reason why we don't, can't.
Absolutely, yeah.
Right now, we have the power here not to change the zone.
That's cool.
Zone has to stay the same. I'm saying that once you change the zone and they come in front of us, we have to have a good reason why we deny it. And if we don't have a good reason why we deny it, it goes to court and they win anyway. So that's what it comes down to when you change the zone. This commission doesn't have to change the zone.
Your full discretion.
Right. And I said it was a tough piece of property, and that's, that's where I stand on it, because.
It's a very tough piece of.
Right. I just want to be clear on that, that's, that's what happens. It's like, you know, we'll change the zone, and once they come in with the application, we have to look at the application and we have to deny it if it doesn't work. We have to deny it for a good reason, otherwise it goes to court and they end up getting the application anyway.
Right.
Right now, we have control not changing the zone and leaving it at what it, what it is.
That's right.
So that's, that's all I have to say, and, you know, I'm only one commissioner, that's it.
So it'll be more expensive to develop than if, obviously, it wasn't. Um, they feel like, uh, the owners of the property feel like they wanna invest the money in developing the property, so that is compliant with wetlands regulations, it'll have to have a wetlands review, and that is compliant with the sanitarians, um.
Right, this is an extremely difficult property. So there's a lot of things that they're gonna have to do to make sure it goes.
That's compliant, exactly.
Right, so, I mean, Leon's a hundred percent right, but there's also a lot of, there's also a lot of, uh, uh, protections too.
Well, yeah.
My point on the whole thing, Bruno, is that, is it the right place to put this kind of unit in with all those wetlands? That's what I'm saying, it's.
I don't know if that, is that really our decision to decide what goes where?
Our decision if we wanna change the zone.
Right, but it's our decision.
No, Bruno, you look at everything, including in the environment.
Right.
The commission looks at everything.
So there's an age restricted, uh, development right next to it.
That's contiguous, that's right.
Right, it's, we, it's in an, an area where there's a firehouse right across the street.
Correct.
Um, it's going to be age restricted, so older people, um. There are advantages to it, I mean, I mean, we have to have a, a good reason for the landowner who sees his neighbor did this, why can't I now do this? I mean, why would we deny him the opportunity to do it legally?
Again, but I, I'm not, I'm not against it.
No, I'm just explaining the other side of the equation.
I think Leon's a hundred percent right, but I also don't, I also.
He is right.
He is right, but I also don't, I don't begrudge a, a person coming in and, and if they, if they try and they do the right thing, it should be okay. Just because a septic tank that went in fifty years ago failed doesn't mean a septic tank that's going in today with a fifty years of, of.
New technology.
New technology is not gonna, it's not gonna service.
Codes have been.
I mean, things do change. None of you guys are driving a Model T, are you, to work every day? Stuff changes, man.
Is there any other discussion?
I'm only one commissioner.
I just think most of the properties left in town, you know, to develop on are all challenged.
Yes.
They're all challenged.
See the ledge?
So either we stop development or we decide to let the, uh, proper, uh, channels take their place, and
Yeah.
I'm confident that the compliance is put in place, you know, are gonna provide adequate due diligence in this respect.
Any other discussion? If not, then, uh, we have a motion, we have a second. If there's no further discussion, then, uh, we'll call the roll, starting on my right, Commissioner Condon.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, no.
O'Reilly, yes.
Maeney, yes.
Westland, yes.
Motion passes for yeses and one no. Okay, next, we have one more, uh, item to deliberate on.
No, that was it.
Oh, no?
That was it.
Closed. Zone boundary.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
We closed, uh.
That's why you're the chairman.
He's been trapped.
You're on top of stuff.
ZCA twenty twenty-one dash oh two, file number one zero two zero D, that's the one we just heard, um, uh, Dave Bjorkland presented again. Basically, um, the landowner has two small properties on twenty-five, the front portion of the property is zone I one, the rear portion of both properties is zone I two. Um, would like to develop the land, as you heard, and as you can see on the list here, there are more uses for the I two than the I one. Uh, do we want those uses on Route twenty-five? Um, that's the question.
So realistically, we're looking at firewood processing and school bus parking is something that's not already on twenty-five.
Auto body.
There's auto service on twenty-five, right?
There is.
Yeah.
Twenty-five, but not in an I.
Different, different zones, but if, I mean, the concern Leon brought up, and if I'm wrong, you can tell me, um, is that, you know, there's uses in here that we didn't want on the main roads.
Right.
Shooting range.
Um, but there's a shoot, but there is a shooting range on twenty-five, there's. Yeah, it, again.
And should this even be an industrial zone or should it be a business zone?
Well, that's what I'm saying. It should be a business zone, really, but, I mean, it's, we have industrial.
Are we changing this for all zones?
No, we're not.
The ones or I two?
No, we're not. I thought that we would look at the whole zone. Figure out what we could do with the whole zone.
We're just changing.
Yeah.
I discussed it.
That's not.
We really need to look at that whole zone.
Whole thing comprehensively.
Like now, we're just gonna change this zone area to accommodate for this use.
Problem is, it's archaic having lots split.
No, it is, and I understand that, and something has to be done about it.
What do you suggest? We put it all I one, that, that particular lot?
Well, I'm saying is that when we did, the, uh, when we, when we went in and did the I two, we sat down and we said, because there were interior lots and there was, and it was gonna be, there was nothing really in I two that would end up being on, on the main, main roads. I mean, we sat down, we did this, and that's why we put these extra uses, because they were never there before.
Uh, I just, just food for thought. Guys put stuff in there, or, I don't know if you were on that commission at that time. But, but you put auto body, so you didn't have it on I two, but we have it all up and down Route twenty-five.
No, we do. No, 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 these were just added on to this, but the, the school bus thing, we added that in to an I two.
I understand, but I'm just saying, what I'm saying.
I think we had.
But I'm saying, I, I, I get what you're saying, but what I'm saying is you add these things, but then, but then they're everywhere else, just in a different, like Ryan was saying.
Reason for not having them in that one small patch?
Like, I, I don't know, it doesn't.
Well, there was, no, there was a reason.
I could put a shooting range on B one, but.
Well, we went for this.
On the same road in the same area?
Like I, like I just said to Dave, I said, I said to Dave, I said, I just, that we have, we have a new tool that we could use, that they could come in front of us, and if they come in front of us for something that they wanna change, we could change this.
Oh, the overlay?
To allow it, and they all.
That's what you meant.
We have that, and we have that tool here.
He doesn't use his words right, Brian.
I thought you meant just switch it to an I, now I know what you're saying.
No, 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 we have that.
Forgot about that, we haven't used it yet.
We haven't used it yet, and then.
Stay with the times, boys.
And so what Dave is saying that attract more people if he has all these uses.
Technically, I'm saying is if.
Technically, it doesn't.
Because you get a, an overlay zone and you can get.
The overlay is just for mixed use, though, isn't it?
No, it's, no.
No, anything.
It's not for anything.
Anything.
We'd have to add the language to that regulation, though, right?
No, no.
We can pick and choose, if you wanna change it to a zone.
The very Stewart amusement wants to come to us to, to do something on this property, we can.
Could change it.
We can to allow that. Like a use that's not usually permitted, if they say, hey, we think we, you know.
Hence Newtown with the tractor supply, where the tractor supply.
Yeah, let's, uh, yeah, let's hold off, I'm gonna talk to Dave, because he, he, he wasn't thinking about the other tool.
Way around the corner.
But really, all parcels should be in one zone.
I, no, 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 and I have, I think we really should look at all that, because it's, it's really, it's all really cut up, and I got all that, but.
I just didn't get the opinion, or the feeling that they actually have a business in mind yet.
No, they don't.
I think they just want to.
May not want to, oh, it's.
Yes. Again, the thing, if it, what they did and it was something in here that, like, if they wanted the I two because of the use and it's something we don't usually, it's.
Yeah, but he could advertise it as it's not gonna be a problem.
Firewood or buses.
Right. As opposed to, we'll, we'll go check out once you decide you have an interest.
It's like right on the border of Newtown, right?
Yes.
Why don't you talk to, um.
Whatever. What you gonna put over there?
Oh, yeah, alright, so then we'll put this on hold.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, if, by, by coming in with an overlay zone, don't you get even more?
I don't really.
Uses?
If all these uses were.
Then what you get, then. It almost is a shoe in zone.
Cause you don't have to prove it.
I understand, I still don't have to prove it, I mean.
Yes or no?
Uh, we close this, right, so we have to vote on it?
No.
Don't have to vote on it.
We don't have to deliberate on it and close it, I'm, tonight, no. It is closed, but we don't have to.
If we started, if we started deliberations, we.
Yeah, no, I hear you.
Phone deliberations.
You have sixty-five days.
Oh, cool, alright, good, so you. Alright, good, good, good. Make sure we're like, oh, yeah, go talk to him and.
We have time, if you want. Which is from where, it's like, I'll give you more options, but I could also.
Uh, could the subcommittee start looking at zones? Right, we did something.
Oh, you're right, you're right.
Pseudo recently with, uh, my Valvoline, right, didn't we turn all those and like be? Yeah. It was such a mess, yeah, so maybe we should.
But that area's been pretty chopped up.
It might be something we could do for him that they don't even need to.
Like, on the corner there, right where, is you doing all the construction there, that's.
Yeah, so it might be nicer if we can get a whole batch of them all done at one.
At one time.
Okay.
I'll afford that.
Well, put that on.
You're all for what?
Pending.
I'm talking right.
Okay, so I have a bond release request.
That's extremely rude, just start there.
Leon's being rude.
Can you bang him with the gavel?
I didn't hear him.
Oh.
Alright, so I have a bond.
If you wanna come join us.
From Five Victoria Drive. You guys wanna move on on what?
Yeah, we're ready to go home, Mike.
We're ready. Bond release request is October twenty twenty-one, original bond at twenty-eight thousand, current bond at twenty-eight thousand. The bond inspection has been completed, the as-built has been submitted, all work has, that has been required is in compliance and is finished, and it is recommended, um, by, I imagine, Schatzling?
No, no, this is a zoning, uh, there's no engineering related. This is Mr. Chapman's first official.
Alright.
Uh, Joe, Joe?
Is recommending to release the bond.
Full release.
So. So.
This is gonna be his first stake to claim here.
Chair will entertain a motion to release the bond.
I make a motion to release SCP 2050 National 15, number, what does that say? 1551A, Five Victoria Drive.
Alright, have motion.
Second.
Have a second. So any discussion?
No.
If not, call the roll, signing with Commissioner Condon.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Mainey, yes.
Westland, yes.
Bond is released.
Thank you.
Good job, Joe.
Alright, so, uh, correspondence.
Your first victory.
We have a 2022 regular meeting scheduled. Does everyone have a copy of it? Alright, so take it home and look it over. If there's any conflicts or issues, which we'll talk about at the next meeting and then adopt it. I also have a memorandum from the Monroe Conservation Water Resources Commission. Um, I haven't had a chance to look at this. I think we all have it in front of us. I'm not even sure what it is. If you want to read it and take a look at it, take a minute.
That was awesome, man. I don't know what it is.
Landscape master plan.
Was this?
The four million regulations amendment. Do we have a landscape master plan?
Is that for a project or for a text?
1585 Monroe Turnpike.
Oh, no, that's, we thought it was for tonight.
That we didn't get any of this stuff. We got their comments, that's it.
Oh, this was for tonight.
Master landscape plan used to be, uh.
Yeah, they want the native plant.
Right.
Yeah, we know.
Didn't he say he was gonna do native?
Yeah.
Well, we haven't seen that yet.
No, that's where we're continuing.
Alright, then we'll hang on to that one.
Landscape master plan used to be, uh.
Okay, this is being recorded, remember?
It's a landscape machine.
Alright, Chairman, uh, Chairman's report. I don't have any report. Commissioner's report?
I got something.
Go ahead.
What's going on with McDonald's, dude?
Hey, that's it.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Okay, um, as you know, the, uh, participation by the customers did not cooperate with the signage. There has to be a physical barrier separating the access driveway that forks that goes to two menus board to protect the bypass lane. They have put up temporary cones. And the assistant manager is going out there daily now and educating the people.
Rick, what happened to our approval? It's, we had an approval that we, I, I specifically.
Leon, you're right.
What did that all go away at?
Permanent markers have to be installed.
Permanent, I wanted something like, or a barrier, permanent barrier. And he agreed to it here. How did that dick taken off the plan? And how did we not, we approved that, we, we approved it for conditions for that. We should have never gotten to that point. Now we're at this point here, how did that plan get approved? When it, specifically, I, I think most of us heard that that's what I.
Oh, no.
My main concern was, and it, and it did happen because it wasn't done.
It, you're absolutely right, Leon, and it is going to be installed.
But I, I still don't know how that happened.
Is it on the plan?
No, it is not on.
Not on the.
Oh, it's not on the plan, okay.
I wouldn't have got.
So we signed, we looked at the plan and we, and we, and we approved the plan that wasn't approved by this commission.
What?
Well, we give, we, well.
We had conditions.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, and that plan.
Did not meet.
Not have it.
Not fulfill all the conditions of.
Of this is commission. And so how did that happen?
It's, uh, as you can see, things are happening with the staff loving, level that we have right now. And all of these things have to be, uh, addressed.
Fell through the.
No, I have, I, I, and I understand that this applicant, when he came in front of us, he knew that he had to do that.
Right.
And he chose not to put it on the new set of plans.
So because it wasn't enforced by staff.
Rick just said he made it, they made a mistake. They made a mistake.
It has to be done.
So is he gonna bring?
Well, he knows he has to.
So he's gonna bring some kind of plan in front of this.
Absolutely.
Okay.
But in the meantime, because it's a safety issue, staff insisted some type of barrier go up there. They put the cones up, but you know, you can run over cones. And, uh, I, I was up there again today.
They have somebody standing out there now.
Yeah, they have to. Yeah, they have to.
Run over them too.
Right, because people are gonna run over those cones. The thing is, Rex, it's very hard. The way they put that striping in there.
Oh, the back out of there, I think.
Why was, why was, why is they striping on an angle?
Angle parking.
Angle parking.
Yeah.
Seriously.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. All those things are gonna be.
No, because it's a real, it's really tight to even get out of there. I mean, that's, that's a mess over there. And somebody's gonna end up getting either hurt or hit there because it, it's, it's a mess there. It's, it's, and I, I knew that that was going to happen. I knew it was a tough spot to do it. That's why I wanted to put that stuff in there and then all of a sudden, it's all disappeared and it's not there. And this, and those parking spaces should have been angled because then there's not that much that you need to get out.
You, you have my assurance that this is high priority and will be resolved before the next meeting. It has to be resolved.
Okay.
That's in the wall.
Alright, are there any other commissioner reports or questions?
I, I stopped by Victoria Drive again yesterday and it looks like there's some excavating going on for the building. Are you aware of any, uh, process, any, uh, progress? The 10,000 foot building for Amazon. You know, we saw the elevation.
Yeah, the, the removal.
They're digging, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. There's a mouse in the wall. I have another problem. There's a mouse in this wall and it's creeping me out right now. Sorry, just thought I'd throw it out there. I can hear it.
So they're moving forward, building?
Yeah. The 10,000 square foot.
You have that? We have that? You voted for the rest of the commission?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna show that's it. Yeah, I'm gonna show. I want to give some.
Saw on the subcommittee, we saw briefly.
Yeah.
Are there any other commissioner reports or commissioner comments? If not, then we go to Rick's report.
Okay.
And you staff.
Joe being brought on board. Uh, Joe is gonna be taking over, as you know. Did the town planners report? I, I, I went over everything from the zoning board of appeals, society council to zoning enforcement, light issues, ongoing issues that are needed like Victoria Drive or like right now McDonald's and other issues. Uh, Joe will be attending live the second meeting of, of each month. Unless we only have one meeting a month, like, say you decide one meeting in December, he'll do his report at that particular meeting. So it'll be called the Planning and Zoning Administrator's Report.
And it will include all of this? Okay.
Now, uh, some of the things that Joe and I will be working together on include the affordable housing plan. It's gotta be adopted by the commission next year. And we have to identify areas. You just can't broadly say we support affordable housing and we're gonna provide for it. So we have to show locations. Obviously, the locations will be the mixed use development right on the town line on 25. Elderly housing that was approved by the commission. And then you gotta identify other areas. We need to continue to move in that direction so we can get enough units to ultimately block the 8-30G affordable housing applications. That will come. It's inevitable. If someone has a site that can accommodate the septic system, a family, they will do it. There's a big demand, as you all know.
So what's going on with that, uh, that elderly one on Nexus Steel's gate time?
Yeah. Uh, they bought the property before Sipins installed their propane tank facility. That propane tank facility in the HUD specs requires a blast wall because of its proximity. It's within 1,500 feet.
It is.
Many years ago in the United States, there was a bad fire which resulted in this regulation requirement.
So they're not doing that building now?
They are trying to come up with a solution, including the waiver of that HUD requirement. Obviously, that takes high profile, uh, national leaders to do that. But they have asked Sipin if they would be willing to allow them to put a blast wall on the property. They declined.
Oh, really?
So now it needs to go on their property.
I remember when we approved that.
It's just too expensive.
There was no talk of, of, of making it restrictive for another lot.
No one, no one, well, they didn't know about that requirement in HUD. It's HUD financed. And like I said, this catastrophe X number of years ago resulted in this new law. It's called the blast wall in case that facility were to blast.
They told us that would never happen.